All right, it is 7:01. I am going to call the meeting to order. I am Patty McCoy. I would like to welcome everyone here. And everyone who watches later at home, thank you for joining us on this lovely evening. And I'm going to ask the board members, starting on my left with Members Chestsane, to introduce themselves, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is LaRonda Chestsane. Thank you so much for joining me.
Good evening, Sean Wilson.
Good evening, Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming up to the board meeting room tonight.
Good evening. This is Anya Pampuksood. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Patrick Keough. Could you be back in the boardroom tonight?
Hello. Good evening, Lauren Christian. Welcome.
And Superintendent Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff, please?
Good evening, Monica Merritt. Welcome to our board meeting this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing, I had to look around the table or we shifted, my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. And thank her for being here to take minutes. I'd like the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Hey, good evening. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Hi, Debbie Pios, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. Welcome, Liz Vartany Gibbs, Human Resources.
Good evening, Curtis Squids, Executive Director of Student Services.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Economic Officer. Thanks for being here.
All right, next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stand.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, so first up is A, Adaption of Agenda and Approval of Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I would like to amend the agenda to remove Policy Number 2260.03, Educational Equity and Racial Equity, to go back to the Policy Committee for further review.
Okay, so did you make a motion for that? And do we need an action item for that? So that would be Action Item...
Seventeen. Take sixteen and move seventeen as well.
No. Twenty-two, twenty-two, ten, twenty.
Action Item Number Twenty-two, ten, twenty.
All right, I'm looking for a second.
A second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved by Member Sido and seconded by Member Chestsane that we amend the agenda to remove Policy Twenty-two, sixty point oh three and send it back to the Policy Committee. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. All right, our agenda has been amended. So now I am looking for a motion to adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, which is Action Item Twenty-two, ten, sixteen.
Madam President, I move that we approve the agenda as, and consent the agenda as amended, Action Item Number Twenty-two dash ten dash six.
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved by Members Sido and seconded by Member Brooks that we approve the amended agenda and approve the consent agenda. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. All right.
I'm sorry, we were supposed to go through it first, too.
I'm sorry. Ms. Merritt, can you take us through the agenda?
Yes, this evening, the agenda consists of Human Resources transactions. It's our last time together. We have new hires, resignations, and retirements. We have some tenure recommendations this evening, as well as the minutes from our regular meeting on October the 12th. Under the final reading of policies, you approved Policy Five, Three, Three, Five. That's a care of students with chronic health conditions. Policy Seven, Two, Five, Zero Point Zero One, renaming existing facilities, mascots, logos, and Policy Eight, Three, One, Zero Public Records.
All right, since we've already had our vote, Dr. Vartany Gibbs.
Thank you. Good evening. I have the honor this evening to introduce you to two new teachers in our district. First, Allison Arno. Allison is... Good evening, Allison. Allison, you can stay standing if you'd like, is our new psychologist. Welcome, school psychologist. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Kent State University, a master's from John Carroll University, and a specialist from Wayne State University. Welcome. We are very thankful you are here with us. Next, we have Christina West. Christina West is our new research room teacher at Canton High School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from University of Michigan, as well as a master's degree from University of Michigan. Welcome, Christina. Congratulations to Allison and Christina. Next, I'd like to recognize Lisa Colzer, who is a social studies teacher at West Middle School. She'll be retiring, so congratulations to Lisa on nineteen years of service. This evening, we have five teachers who are receiving tenure. I know some of you are here this evening, so when I call your name, if you could stand up so we can all recognize you. So first, I would like to recognize Joshua Skelly. Thank you, Joshua. Joshua is an elementary school teacher at Byrd, and he is receiving tenure this evening after five successful years of teaching. And here is what George Hill, the principal of Byrd Elementary, has shared regarding Joshua Skelly. Joshua has taught at Byrd Elementary School since 2016. During that time, he has established himself as a dynamic presence among the teaching staff. He has an excellent rapport with students and shows a sincere interest in them as individuals. Mr. Skelly has taught second and fourth grade here at Byrd. He is a teacher representative for the Byrd PFO and always volunteers for special events. We are so happy to have him on staff, facilitating a love of learning for all of the Thunderbirds. It is my pleasure to recommend him for tenure with Plymouth Canton Community School District. Congratulations, Joshua.
Next, I would like to introduce you to Catherine Marpet. Catherine is an elementary school teacher at Farron School. And this is what Carolyn Washington would like to share, who is the principal of Farron, about Catherine. Katie is an educator who sets high expectations for herself and her students. Katie is a member of our Learning Design Team and is my go-to person to look over new plans for the school. We love the fact that she is an out-of-the-box thinker. Katie thinks deeply and leads her students to do so as well. One of the many highlights of my observations in Katie's classrooms is to watch her students work independently and productively while their teacher works with small groups in the content areas without interruption. Congratulations, Katie. Next, Jonathan Lundberg. Jonathan is a choir teacher at Salem High School. And this is what Kim Valarosa, the principal of Salem High School, would like to share about Jonathan. Jonathan Lundberg is a vital member of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools music program. He works diligently to create an environment where students can enjoy singing while constantly getting better and improving on their skills and talents. Even during a pandemic, he was able to find a way for students to showcase their incredible talents with two outdoor concerts. Mr. Lundenberg is very professional and works well with students with varying levels of ability. It is my pleasure to recommend Jonathan for tenure. Sarah Medlin. Sarah is an elementary teacher at Field School. And here is what Letitia Thompson, Thomas, principal of Field School, would like to share about Sarah. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Sarah Medlin for tenure in the Plymouth Canton Community School District. Sarah is a hidden gem in our district. She teaches with an exemplary ability to meet children where they are and successfully push them toward excellence. Sarah quietly leads her team while making her opinion and presence known in a skillful manner that helps to shift thinking. She is able to do this because she is open to reflection and changing ideas that she may have previously had. Sarah works to establish genuine relationships with students and their families. She actively listens to her students and allows them to feel heard. We are truly lucky to have Sarah as part of the team. Congratulations, Sarah. Next, Alan Nickley. Alan is an elementary school teacher at Farron School, receiving tenure this evening. And here is what Carolyn Washington would like to share. Alan is an educator who forms strong relationships with her students. There is a reciprocal relationship of care and respect between Alan and her students. Student voices are valued and elicited. The expectation for learning is high in this classroom as she prepares her students for higher-order thinking and creative problem solving. It is my pleasure to recommend Alan for tenure in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Congratulations, Alan. So congratulations to Joshua Skelly, Catherine Marpet, Jonathan Lundenberg, Sarah Medlin, and Alan Nickley on receiving tenure this evening. Joshua, thank you for representing all the teachers. All right, thank you very much. For the new teachers, welcome to the district. We're glad you chose us. Now, next up, we have celebrating success with Mr. Keough tonight. We'll be doing that.
It's great to be back here in person during celebrating success and not being from the state. Celebrating success this evening will honor Eighty-eight Point One, The Park, our student-run radio station, for working tirelessly to produce amazing radio for the community despite many challenges this past year. This past April, the Michigan Association of Broadcasters Foundation presented Eighty-eight One with the 2021 High School Station of the Year Award for the fourth year in a row, placing it first out of 202 high school and college radio programs. Tonight, we'd like to honor the entire student staff of Eighty-eight One, The Park, represented here tonight by Student Operations Manager, Evie Kadat, and Sports Director, Ben Burden, as well as Station Manager, Bill Keith, also joining this evening, and Assistant Station Manager, John Krieger. This show would not go on without the fantastic dedication of the Eighty-eight One staff. The M A B F also presented PCEP students with fifteen of the thirty-two individual awards in the high school radio category. Heather McCorkle, Emma Johnson, Elisa Andrews, Ashley Temple, Lily Macon, Ben Burden, Jacob Jansen, Rohan Ghattan Salah, Grace Alman, Maddie Bajoric, Megan Swan, Daniel Shaner, and Kylo Schilling, and Anna Brandell all received individual honors and were, of course, key contributors to the Station of the Year Award as well. I'd like to invite Bill Keith to the podium to share more about the team's hard work this past year.
Well, thank you very much. It's a real honor to be recognized for the station. And we want to especially thank the board and the school district administration for the support over many years. I think back that not only the current board, but so many boards have really stepped forward to support this radio station and make it possible during some really challenging time. But our success as a station is really attributed to the amazing students that have done great work. So it's great to have both Evie and Ben here to be able to say a few words. But most importantly, as a station, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to give back and serve the community. It's probably the best part of running a high school radio station is being involved closely in the community. We have a couple of things that I wanted to quickly mention before Evie and Ben say something, but our pledge drive kicks off next week, November 1st through the 6th. And we appreciate the support of the community. And we're looking forward to having Superintendent Merritt as one of our guests during the pledge drive. And next year is the 50th anniversary of the radio station. It's signed down the year of February 14th, 1972. And that kicks off a year of all kinds of different celebrations that we're doing with groups in the community, from the Plymouth Historical Museum to the Michigan Philharmonic and so many other groups in between. And at the end of the year, we're going to do an alumni reunion, bringing back alums from all over the country to celebrate the station's history. I do want to mention, too, John unfortunately was unable to be here, our assistant manager, John Krieger, but really his support really makes the radio station possible. He works tirelessly with the students and not only is passionate about broadcasting, but his love for the students really comes through. He's back at the station right now, making sure that students have access. So I'll turn it over to Evie and Ben to say a few words, too.
Hi, I'm Ben Burden, the Sports Director at Eighty-eight One Park. I've been here for four years now, and I can't name a single class that has contributed more to my life than this extracurricular activity. For one, it's made me come a lot more out of my shell from my freshman year. It's allowed me to get more of a better view of what I want to do in life for the future, for my career. And most importantly, it's allowed me to make a lot of friends that I would have never made in other situations, and I'll keep these friends for my whole life. So I'd like to thank the board for everything they've done for the station so far, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Merritt and PCCS Board Members. My name is Evie Kadat, and I'm a senior at Salem High School, and I'm the Operations Manager at Eighty-eight One Park. As the Operations Manager, I'm in charge of the behind-the-scenes aspects of the station, such as fundraising and production. I work with the directors of those departments to help them lead their staffs effectively. And I'm honored to be here this evening to represent WSDP. I've been a member of Eighty-eight One since my freshman year. And although I auditioned for a position on the radio station, I ended up joining a family as well. Being a member of Eighty-one has helped me become a more well-learned person. It has taught me to become a more confident public speaker, more engaged in social settings. It helped to better my communication skills. The success of the station would be nothing, though, without Bill Keith, our Station Manager, and John Krieger, our Assistant Station Manager. Their guidance and continued mentorship really helps the success of the station. And lastly, on behalf of the staff at WSDP, I would also like to thank our PCCS Board Members, Administration, community members, and families for their continued support of Eighty-eight One. Without you, our success would not be possible.
So thank you, and on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to present Bill Keith and John Krieger on his behalf with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mylar Award for your outstanding work in leading the Eighty-eight One team. And I would also like to present to Evie Kadat and the rest of the Eighty-eight One Students with Stars Awards for Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. And I'm sorry, this is for both Evie and Ben. So I want to thank you and congratulations to everyone.
All right, thank you so much and congratulations. I think sometimes we forget that not every district has a student-run radio station. We're so used to all the enrichments that they have. We don't realize it until you say something to somebody and they're like, "Your district has a radio station." So congratulations, it's a well-deserved award. We are now on to Board Committee Reports and Action. First up is the President's Report. We keep this short so we can keep going on our meeting. We have a High-Impact School Governance Meeting tomorrow night. You should have gotten the information on that. It starts here at 6 o'clock. And we'll wrap it up by eight, so we can work on our board governance with the presenters from Wayne Risa. We are also in full swing with all of our committee work going on. And we'll be having, we have an exciting new committee that will be starting in November, so look out for that. So next up is Student Performance and Achievement with Members Sido.
Thank you, President McCoy. We have not met since our last meeting, but we do have a meeting coming up on November 3rd at 5:00 p.m. I encourage everyone that's interested to attend here in the boardroom at 5:00.
The Policy Committee, we actually met this evening at 5:30 down in the Collaboration Space. We actually had a community member who came to the meeting who was not on the committee, so that was exciting. We actually got a lot done tonight. We have completed our work on the agenda, public participation at board meetings, and Emergency Operations Plan, Operations Report, and we have some, I mean, I'm sorry, Emergency Operations Plan. And then we discussed Annual Report and the student records. We have some questions that we will be discussing at a further time. Our next meeting is actually going to be December 7th at 5:30. Generally speaking, in November, December, because we only have one meeting in December, we only have one policy meeting, and so we've decided on December 7th, since the other meeting is Thanksgiving week. So everyone is welcome to attend. It will most likely be in the Collaboration Space down the hall. Next up is Finance and Operations with Member Keough.
Great, thank you. We met last Thursday, October 21st, here in this room, and we reviewed the audit presentations they will see this evening. And we also had a discussion on the Technology Department restructuring that's also coming up on the agenda this evening. We'll hear about both of those topics. And we had a good discussion about both of those things, and hopefully we'll have a great presentation this evening on those. I know we'll have a great presentation this evening. Our next meeting is Thursday, November 4th, 5:00 p.m., again in this room. And we welcome the community to attend. At that meeting, one of the things that is tentatively coming up is going to be the bid award package for the Plymouth High School Natorium, or Pool, as well as the multipurpose room addition. So a lot of the great projects that we're doing, we use the community's support with bond money. Those things are coming to fruition, and we're excited to be seeing those things coming forward and seeing those projects and discussing that we're going to lead this process. Again, we welcome the community to attend.
All right, thank you so much. Next up, we have Administrative Reports and Recommendations. Superintendent Merritt.
Thank you, President McCoy. I just want to give an update this evening about transportation, which is, as I think I talked last meeting, the continued challenges that we're facing in the school district are around our staffing issues. One that is most impactful is in transportation. We are currently short eighteen drivers, which has impacted eleven routes in our school district. They have been temporarily suspended as we're working to hire and credential the drivers. We were excited to hire three new drivers when we originally had ten routes that were suspended. But it's always this feeling of three steps forward, four steps back as we hired the three new drivers. Then we had resignations from two current drivers, as well as two drivers that went on a leave of absence, and it's left us with the eleven routes. Just to try to share among that impact around families, we're keeping the way that we return the routes in order. So the original ones are going to be filled first, and then the ones that have been vacated based on these resignations will go into the bottom of the list. We currently do have fifteen drivers in the pipeline. Six have passed. They are testing protocols, and they're starting behind-the-wheel training. People do ask us, "Why does this take so long?" It does take long. It's important. They're carrying our students to and from school, so we want to make sure that they have all of the training that they need and are able to pass those protocols. I think nine are working on their temporary permits right now. This week, Durham conducted two in-person interviews, ten phone interviews, and they received one new application. This impact is definitely great on our families. We're going to send an updated communication to families that are impacted by these routes tomorrow. We've been trying to brainstorm some ways that we can bring some relief to families, so we're looking on some creative ways to support through our K8 Extended Day Program, offering free childcare services either before or after school for those families that their buses have been suspended. And also just looking at different ways or different options that we may be able to work with to help to mitigate the challenges. Another thing that we're doing is the job fairs. As I announced at the last meeting, we had a virtual job fair last week, and we were successful in hiring some positions. We have another job fair that is coming up next week. Is that correct?
November 4th.
November 4th. This will be an in-person job fair. It's taking place at the Canton Library. We're looking to partner during this job fair with Durham Services, as well as our ABM partners. So we'll be looking to hire bus drivers, custodial staff, substitute teachers. With the substitute teachers, you have to have sixty college credit hours. And paraprofessionals, excuse me. We continue to, hold on. Look for ways that we can support hiring within the district and support our staff that's really here. I do want to share, who am I going to break this short? As we move through the district and continue to engage in our staff, which you see this evening with Ben and Evie, that is possible through the investment of incredible staff members in our young people's experience. Our staff members are stretched. They are tired. And I talk about this each meeting. They need to continue to be applauded for showing up each and every day for our students. We want to continue to listen, though, to our staff. Not only is it important to hire, but we need to retain and make sure that we wrap our arms around them. So no conversation or ideas off the table. We're looking for multiple ways to engage our staff, hear them. We need them to know that we hear, that they are stressed, and we're together collectively working to keep going and keep our doors open for our students. So I just want to continue to thank them every chance I can. Talking about thanking, if I get through this, points of pride. I want to acknowledge our kids and the hard work that they do. Our students from PCEP shined this week in the cyber challenge competition. Three teams... Three teams from Ken High School continued the district's tradition of excellence in computer programming and cybersecurity education last week when they swept the honors at the Sixth Annual Governors High School Cyber Challenge Competition. This year's challenge saw 169 teams from 21 schools progress through the competition rounds until 10 schools took on the final task. And when I tell you of those 10 teams, four were composed or comprised of PCEP students. Talk about something to be proud of. And out of those teams, all three of the award places went to PCET teams under the direction of Coach Obz. So, can we please just do one? I just want to go through the teams, the actual teams. First-place honors went to students Eric DeRusso, David Reeves, and Jacob Eason, while second-place awards went to Alex Biao and Jayden Sarveskumar. And taking third place was Pravnav Marugu, Fritz G., and Robert Everett. So, we want to thank our students for that incredible accomplishment. And while announcing the winners, I will share that Michigan Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist said, "These bright young Michiganders are the next generation of cybersecurity experts." It is tremendously important that we continue to support and invest in cybersecurity research, training, and educational programs in schools at every level to expose and engage young people in this field for years to come. So, kudos to our young people. Kudos to Scott Obznik and our team for supporting our young people in this experience. Congratulations to our amazing students. Well, I also want to give a shout out, I said I was going to be brief in here, I still go. To our young people at Gallimore, because they, congratulations is definitely in order. Congratulations is definitely in order. They, through U.S. News and World Reports, they are number two of all Michigan elementary schools in the state of Michigan. Something to be proud of. I've heard a little commentary around to say, "Well, they should be number two." That's the tag school. But do not underestimate the hard work that goes from Principal Amy Bell and her staff to invest in students who are already coming at high levels of achievement and still stretching those students and growing those students and creating these incredible opportunities. So, that school received an impressive overall score. It was 99.3 out of 100. And this includes the student-teacher ratio, proficiency rankings, assessment scores, student diversity, and other school data. But again, like we know, it's all about the people, not just the reports. So, starting with our amazing students and who are led to achieve these outstanding moments of achievement by our incredible teachers, our caring support staff, and our strong building leaders. So, kudos to the Gallimore School Community. Just a couple of more announcements. Important information for our elementary families regarding breakfast for students. As a reminder, the USPA has granted free breakfast and lunch until June of 2022. And we began this year with the option for families to opt out of getting daily breakfast bag to take home. We have heard from parents that they would prefer to opt in for this option to assist with planning and to prevent food waste. So, effective November 1st, elementary families will need to opt in to take the free Take Home Breakfast Bag program home. Each elementary school will be posting an opt-in form on their building's websites for families to complete. It is not mandatory to register for the breakfast program. You only need to opt in if you would like for your students to receive the daily free breakfast meal bag. The opt-in is a one-time sign-up, and if you don't register, or you'd like to participate, or opt out at a later time, you'll just need to contact your school cafeteria's manager here at their school website. PCCS is an equal opportunity provider and employer. I think that is all that I will share this evening. I do want to just wrap up, though, in saying that we had a successful virtual town hall as a part of our Dynamic Plan draft that we'll review this evening. One of the goals has been to improve communication in terms of the two-way communication. So, allowing feedback loops is important to you as a board, to us as district administration, and to our overall school community. So, having opportunities through virtual town halls to receive questions and feedback from our community and to respond to and provide that information regarding a wide range of topics was so beneficial and important. So, the event remains archived on the PCCS official YouTube channel for those who would like to tune in. And we'll continue to have many more of these town hall-style events in the future, not just with our community, but also using that avenue to have two-way communication with staff as well. So, with that, it has been a busy time here at PCCS. We continue to overcome the challenges that face us so we can achieve our goal of staying in person five days a week, because that is so important and beneficial for our students who choose that option. Again, shout out to our students who are also learning virtually because they are experiencing success in that program as well. And that was it for me.
All right, thank you. So, next up, we have Finance and Operations with Ms. Piaz.
Thank you very much. This is the culmination of a year's worth of work from Mr. Devon Kling and his Finance Department. And with us this evening is Navarro Kruger and Cara Miller from Planta Moran. They're going to take us through a summary of the audit results and a financial presentation. And as Member Keough mentioned earlier, we discuss this in detail at the FNO meeting last Thursday on October 21st. Navarro.
Good evening. Great to be here with all of you. Good evening. And then will this? So, in your board package, you do have a copy of the Basic Financial Statements, the Report on Federal Awards, and our letter to the Board. And we're here to provide an overview for the year ended June 30, 2021. So, all school districts in the state of Michigan are required by state law to have an audit. And so, we completed our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards based on our review of your procedures, testing your transactions, and looking at your year-end balances. And I'm pleased to report that we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on your basic financial statement. This is the highest form of assurance that we can provide. And really what this means is, as a result of our procedures, we did not identify any material adjustments to your financial statements. So, then in addition to the basic financial statements, we also take a look at your federal programs. And this year, we tested three of your federal programs. Your IDEA, which is your special education program, and then two new programs that the district received this year, the Corona Relief Fund and then the ESER Grants. So, these were new sources that the district received and they were subject to our audit. And I'm pleased to report in all three of the programs that we had no findings or question costs. And finally, we also take a look at your capital project expenditures to ensure that they were spent in accordance with the ballot language that was approved, as well as state law. And again, pleased to report that there were no findings or question costs as a result of our review there. And during our procedures, we do take a look at the internal controls at the district, and we identified no internal control deficiencies as a result of our audit. So, a few highlights from this past year. You did have a financially successful year. You completed your fifth year under the Wayne County RISA Enhancement Village. You continue to operate within your budget, and you continue to invest dollars in the classroom. So, approximately 14.9 million of capital investments were made through your bond funds and other capital project funds this past year. And your bonds, they're supported by the taxpayers, and there was no millage rate increase that was required this year. So, before I get into the historical results, I do want to touch a little bit on K-12 funding. And so, you know, I'm sure you all remember back in May of 2020 when, you know, the state was projecting 650 per pupil decrease in funding because of the uncertainty of the pandemic. So, thankfully, that did not come to fruition for your fiscal year end 21. And, you know, and that was a relief to all school districts because now you were facing new costs on how to educate children, launching into a hybrid model. And you did receive some federal funds that we did test this year, the Coronavirus Relief and ESER. And there are significant amount of federal funds that are yet to be received by the district. And, but with all federal funds and with these particular funds, there is a funding cliff after three years. And so, what this slide represents is your non-recurring COVID-19 relief funding. And the amounts that have been awarded, extended, and, you know, anticipated to be received. So, there's a lot going on here, so I'll walk you through the graph. So, on the left-hand side, you see all of the COVID-related grants. So, you have your Corona Relief Fund and then your various ESERS. So, ESER 1, 2, 2 Stabilization, which is state-funded, and ESER 3, and ESER 3 Stabilization, which is probably the most significant one that you'll receive here. The amounts depicted in orange are the, I'm sorry, the amounts depicted in green are the amounts that are known awarded. And the amounts depicted in orange are the amounts the district has already spent. So, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, you received 6.5 million. You've already spent those funds, those are done. Same with ESER 1, you completely spent down the ESER 1 funds. And so, the other piece that this graph does represent is the funding period you have to send these funds over. So, if you look at ESER 2, or I'm sorry, ESER 3, you have 8.2 million, and you have until September 30, 2024, to spend these funds. And then the ESER 2, ESER 3 Stabilization of 10.5 million, you have until September 30, 2023, to spend these funds. So, you still have a long runway. And the ESER 3 Grants, both of those, those are the estimated amounts. Those have not been formally awarded yet. So, while it is a significant benefit to the district to receive these funds, the utilization of these funds will require a deliberate strategic plan to ensure the long-term financial stability and cost structure for the district. So, with that, we'll turn it over to the historical results, but felt that this was really important to cover because there's a lot coming down over the next few years. So, I'll turn it over to Cara.
All right, looking at fiscal year 21. This is our balance sheet, so it's a snapshot in time as of June 30. In the general fund, your assets are mostly related to cash investments and receivables from the state related to state aid. From a liability perspective, the largest portion of that general fund liability are the salary accruals for the teacher salaries that are paid in July and August. And then the assigned fund balance in the general fund relates to the budgeted operating deficit for fiscal year 22, which is based on the budget that was adopted in June of 21 prior to that September State Budget Conference that happened just recently. And then in your special revenue funds, that includes food service, community service, student activities, and Act 18. So, these funds are used to account for revenue that is restricted to specific purposes as far as your expenditures go. And then from a debt service perspective, these funds are used to record tax, interest, and other revenue for payment of interest and principal on long-term debt. And then finally, your capital projects funds, with your most significant being the 2019 and 2020 Capital Projects Funds, are used to account for bond proceeds and capital if you're looking for other terms. And then looking at revenue expenditures and savings and fund balance for fiscal year 21, these are through June 30, so they do not include summer spending. And then from a general fund perspective, your fund balance increased about 6.4 million, while overall fund balance for the governmental funds did decrease about 9.7 million. That is largely due to the decrease in capital projects funds from your capital spending. Looking at general fund revenue for fiscal year 21, the general fund totaled 178.4 million this past fiscal year. Your state and local sources are primarily made up of the foundation allowance and property taxes, while the inter-district and other sources are made up of the Enhancement Village, Act 18 funding, and federal grants. So, as you can see, from a funding perspective, the district is completely dependent on state and federal dollars for funding purposes. Looking now at your per pupil foundation allowance for fiscal year 21, this shows the district's per pupil foundation allowance compared to several other districts of similar size and/or geographic location. So, as you can see, Plymouth is at the lowest end of the range in terms of per pupil funding from a state level, as well as at the lowest level statewide. So, if we look at this historically, from the 2009, 2010, there we go. Fiscal year to 2021, that inflation line that you see is based on the average inflation over this time period of 2.07%. And if the district would have kept up with inflation from a per pupil funding perspective, in fiscal year 21, the district would have received 10.5 thousand per pupil versus the 8,100 that was actually received this past year. So, the good news is that in fiscal year 22, any districts that were not at the target foundation allowance are being increased to 8,700 per pupil. So, while this is good news for the district, as you can see from that past slide, there is still a significant difference between the whole harmless and the non-whole harmless districts, as some districts are still receiving quite a bit over that target allowance. Looking at the student enrollment, which is the main driver of revenue for the district. So, this slide shows your blended FTE counts over the past five years, as well as the budgeted FTE counts for fiscal year 22. So, as you can see, a slight decrease is budgeted for this current school year. That is based on the June 2021 budget that was adopted. So, one thing to note is that the 2021 blended count is a super blend, while the 2022 is not. As that information is not quite available to the district yet, but they should have more information in the coming weeks. So, then again, to note, if the super blend were not included in the fiscal year 21, the FTE count would have been closer to 16.4 thousand for the 2021 school year. And then looking at revenue from the Enhancement Village. So, this shows total revenue from the Enhancement Village starting in 2017. One thing I do want to point out is the district receives about 6 to 7 million every year from the Enhancement Village. And this was renewed, however, starting in 2023. The district will start to receive less funding from the Enhancement Village as charter schools will be included in those regulations. The blue portion of the graph represents the delinquent funds that the district receives in those respective years related to the true-up calculations that were performed. So, for 2019, that blue amount reflects the amount received in 2019 related to true-ups in 2017 and 2018, while that 2020 blue amount relates to amounts received in 2020 for the 2019 true-ups. And then in fiscal year 21, a true-up was received related to 2020 of about 15.8 thousand. And then your total enhancement revenue managed in fiscal year 21 was about 7.5. Looking at general fund expenditures for the year by function. Their majority of your expenses relate to instruction and instructional support. So, this is teacher salaries, wages, benefits, classroom supplies, parapros, substitute teachers, et cetera. And then one thing is that that general business and central support category, that includes salaries and benefits for the business office, and it also includes salaries and benefits for all of your school building principals and administrative staff. And then also included in there is substitutes, taxes, insurance, data processing, the Wayne Risa Graduation Alliance, which helps students find other pathways to graduation, as well as warranties for Chromebooks, legal and audit fees, things of that nature. And then this graph shows your general fund expenditures by object as opposed to by function. So, being a service-driven organization, a vast majority of the district's expenditures relate to personnel. So, this being salaries, retirement costs, other fringe benefits. And those account for about 85% of your total general fund expenditures. And then purchase services, which is also primarily personnel-driven, and that's outsourced personnel for custodial and transportation services, makes up about 10% of total general fund expenditures, with the remaining being expenses related to supplies, capital, light, and desk service. And in that supplies category, that includes things such as fuel for buses, textbooks, water and sewage as well. I will pass it back to Navarro.
All right, this next slide represents your retirement funding over the past five years. And so, the orange portion of this graph represents the amount of retirement, the UAAL amount that you've received from the state of Michigan. You record that as revenue, and you have to turn around and immediately pay that back into the system. They help subsidize a part of this, which certainly helps with the retirement benefit. But again, it's an in and an out. And this year, that was 14.2 million. And so, then the district out-of-pocket amount to fund the retirement system this year was 27.8 million. And so, you can see that this is a continue, this is a large expense to the district, and it has grown over the past few years. So, in 2017, the retirement rate was 17%. And in 2021, it was 27%, just over 27. And that's the And that's the projected growth, about 1% a year is projected into the foreseeable future. And the one thing that's important here is this is related to retirement funding for people that have already retired, not your current employees. All right, switching gears to fund balance. So this graph represents a five-year history of your fund balance. And so the green bar represents your total fund balance. So for 21, for the year ended June 30, 21, you had 45.9 million of fund balance. And then the orange part of the graph represents the unassigned fund balance, so the fund balance that isn't assigned to particular items, which is about 22.3%. Then the blue line represented here in this graph, this represents the Michigan School Business Officials' Target Fund Balance for school districts, which is at 15%. And then the red line all the way at the bottom, that is the 5% as a percentage of revenue early warning trigger that the state of Michigan has implemented a few years ago. And as you can see, your fund balance has increased over the past five years, and with the assistance of the federal grants, most schools in the state of Michigan have seen an increase in fund balance this past fiscal year. And so then this slide covers the importance of fund balance. So first, a positive fund balance allows for flexibility in your cash flows, which minimizes the need to borrow to fund your operations. It prevents you from operating in a structural deficit, which if you were in a structural deficit, that would lead to increased reporting and oversight requirements from the state. Fund balance also provides a contingency for unexpected expenses. And finally, it helps maintain your credit ratings to keep interest rates low, so the district keeps more of the money versus you having to pay on that interest rates. So with that, I would like to thank you for the opportunity for serving as your auditors. And a special thank you to Debbie and Devon and the entire business office for their assistance during the audit. So open up to any questions.
Lauren, do you have any questions?
Just as Patrick mentioned, we discussed this at our upcoming meeting this last week, so I just want to thank you for coming out and distilling all that information into a nice presentation.
Patrick?
As we mentioned, we went through all the details about all the line items in the budget process, and again, I appreciate you bringing this forward in a clean, concise way to explain what happened. For those that are watching at home, the full package is available with all the details if you're looking for some late-night reading.
Anopen?
Thank you for the really clear presentation, easy to understand. I just actually have a comment for my board colleagues in terms of looking at the new committee that's going to be hired, the new committee that's being formed. I think looking at these numbers that are presented is really easy to understand, right? It's a good platform for us to work as an advocacy work in terms of the adequate funding. So when you point it out, and you're relying with the transportation, not all school districts offer transportation, we do, and that's about 7.8 million of our costs. And so also, when I was looking at some of the other districts, if you even take us and bump it up to Lebanonia, that's about $7 million a year, just with that extra $400 per pupil. So we have a lot of work to do from our parts, and so, but thank you for pointing that out so easily.
Two things. Lebanonia is not a whole harmless district, so next year will be the same as Lebanonia, and that 7 million is for both transportation and custodial.
Okay.
So just...
Can we get the transportation costs broken out? Okay, thanks.
So you were, actually, transportation was seven and a half million.
Yeah, that's separated out, okay. So if you look at page 12, it is separated out to 7.4. That's it.
I'd just like to thank all the work that is done to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Sean, I'm sorry, I skipped you.
Yeah, no questions, thank you.
Miranda?
No questions, thank you so much.
I did have a question about the recent enhancement village. So for 20, so it's been about like 6.5 million dollars, and then for 2021, it's 7.5. Is that because it's based on pupil counts?
Taxable value.
Taxable value?
Taxable value of the entire county.
So...
Property taxes.
So they all went up, so then we got more money?
Correct.
Perfect, that's lovely.
Homestead and non-homestead.
And then I would like to point out for people who are maybe not aware of it, that when they talked about the retirement cost, and thank you for pointing out how much the state pays, and then they just take it right back, because sometimes they try to act like that is a bump up in what we get. But there's been several different iterations of the pension system, and there's a lot of teachers in the state now who are not part of that and are not paying into it. So our district liability goes up because you have fewer people participating, but you still have employees retiring who have been promised that retirement money.
There are 17-plus plans that are currently in the system, and so it makes it a very difficult conversation to have because everybody was in at a different time. But slowly but surely, the system is going from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan, and it has morphed over the last 30 years.
Yes. But thank you so much, this was a lot of work, and I really do want, I feel what Member Christiansen said, to get a nice, easy-to-understand presentation is really valuable for us and for the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Navra, and thanks to Allison as well, who's not here this evening, and Cara, who is a district resident.
All right, next. Okay, next up, we have action item 22-10-17, consider approval of a resolution, annual financial audit reports for fiscal year 2021. This is a first and final reading.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution, annual financial audit reports for fiscal year 2020 to 2021, first and final reading, action item 22-10-17.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by a member, Kehoe, and seconded by a member, Brooks, that we consider approval of a resolution, annual financial audit report for fiscal year 2021, first and final reading, action item 22-10-17. Is there any discussion? Any questions? I'm hearing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Right. Then the next action item is 22-10-18, consider approval of resolution for bid package HS1 Salem High School Auditorium and renovations, final reading. Looking for motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package HS1 Salem High School Auditorium and renovations, final reading.
All right, looking for something?
Second.
Thank you, and was moved by a member, Brooks, and seconded by a member, Chesley. Is there any discussion on this?
We had discussed this extensively at the last board meeting, as well as when you have to know on the... So if there's any other questions?
Only question is, do we have an accounting of where we are as far as how much we've spent? This is coming from the board, right? How much have we spent?
About 250 million, I think, for about, what, 7 or 8 million so far?
I wouldn't know that off the top of my head, so I'd have to get back to you on that.
Maybe just board notes. Okay, thank you.
All right, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Right. Yes, it's 7-0. And then next up, we have Technology Department Restructuring Presentation. Mr. Salzer is here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm your associate, Andrew Steyman. We met last Thursday with the Finance and Operations Committee and shared that our department has seen a continued increase in technology use and reliance in the district. We've seen an uptick in participation in the one-to-one program, the BYOD program, and use of technology in general in our classrooms. And we also recently applied for and were awarded a $3.1 million grant from the federal government for emergency connectivity funds, connected devices. And when we take those confluence of factors, it led our department to make this suggestion and determination that to serve the interests of the students and the staff in the district, it would make sense to reorganize our department to make more timely the service delivery that we had hoped for and expect to deliver for our staff and students. So the, we did research as well and shared that when you look at our student and staff to department ratio, we're more in keeping with districts that haven't had a mature one-to-one program, and yet we have a mature one-to-one program. And so we went to finance operations and shared this suggestion that we were going to go to the budget transformation meetings, meeting in the spring to ask for the reorganization, propose the reorganization and ask for staffing. But we wanted in advance of that to come at least with three FTEs sooner because we recognized we have a dire need for them. And in the discussion with the committee, you know, the committee helped us think through that recommendation, and we now are coming to request, or at least ask for consideration for a full reorganization as proposed. And the reorganization chart, I think, was in the board package as well. And we're here tonight just to, so those two graphs, one is, that's our current staffing, so you see, we're more in keeping with other large districts that haven't really had a one-to-one program, and then some of the smaller ones are ones that, some of the, where the ratios are closer to a 500 to a staff number ratio are ones that have had mature or, you know, longstanding programs. And then our proposal with the increased FTE would be the next one down, which would bring us more on par with other districts that have both service models, and so we were looking for that consideration tonight. And I think our reorganization chart, which maybe it's length as well?
It's the next one down.
Oh, it's all the way down. So you can see in green are the positions that we're suggesting be added to ensure that we can deliver in the students and staff's best interest, the services. And we're here, Andrew, you want to share anything else?
So just for clarification with the chart, that the white ones are current staff, and that the blue are simply just to categorize to help us better organize the chart.
Open to any questions, you all unpack.
Mark is always so humble, and he and Andrew, but I also, and I ask you this at FNO, to make sure to acknowledge that we have been so successful because of the loyalty and commitment of you two and everyone in that department. And I remember my first year here in the district, when we're having conversations around this one-to-one, and at this board table, I remember conversations to say, "I don't know if we have enough staff to do this." And we've always done it, trying to save money for our taxpayers, which is great, but that's because of the work that you put in. Your entire department works around the clock, around the weekends, holidays, and it's really not sustainable in this time period. So I thank you, and I also thank you for finally asking for the help that you need.
Thank you for that acknowledgement, and truly on behalf of the whole department, they're all a tremendously dedicated group of people. They really came and should be committed for their, all the behind-the-scenes work that they do, but thank you for that acknowledgement.
All right, Member Christiansen, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. As I was mentioning, we talked about this at FNO this last week. I would just add a little clarification to understanding that, you know, a lot of departments are feeling, you know, staffing shortages and recognizing that even waiting for transformations to do this reorganization, you're losing time in actually trying to find people to fill these positions. So I think that's the only thing we've mentioned in our meeting, was that the sooner we can get this in, the sooner that process can happen to support our technology group.
Number Kehoe?
Yeah, just to continue on with what Lauren just mentioned, is that in the technology sector, as well as in all the hiring processes, we may post all seven of these positions now, but we're probably not going to be able to hire them anymore. And so the sooner we can get out there and start hiring these positions, it will be better suited as we go forward. In addition, one of the things that we recognize is that as we've adopted new technology, we've gone to electronic textbooks and all the other things, we haven't really been able to take as much advantage of these things as we'd like. And this needed staffing increase will help with the training of our teachers and our educators to better be able to take advantage of the new modes of education, the kind of things that we're really discussing, and hopefully this evening is part of our dynamic plan. So we think this is very forward-looking in terms of helping us to address some of those things while solving some of the immediate challenges that we see right now within the team. In addition, there's a lot of struggles that we're seeing with respect to cybersecurity and pulling some of our people off to help support them, those initiatives and making sure that things are secure in that environment, those are also super important for us to do in this process. And the team has done a great job so far, we just want to make sure that they're not, they're very stretched right now. We want to make sure that they're not stretched going forward, or at least reduce the stretch.
Members to do?
Thank you. Mark and Andrew, you guys have done a great job, especially with the rollout of Sony and you guys have a lot of talent, everything, going at Agos and the American Nurse. Kudos to you and your team for everything you've been able to do. And, you know, I see the need in terms of not just the tech support, but the instruction to count the specials. And so my wondering is about the intentionality behind that. Yes, we've got a lot of tools and resources. The intentionality behind being sure that the individuals that are responsible for the technology division are actually working with teaching and learning to do the work and just, I'm not sure, that's part of the process. And the other, the question I have is, the $3 million, by the way, congratulations for that grant, is that being used to support some of the positions here?
It's not able to be. It can only be used for connected devices and services, we can't use it for personnel. What we are using some of it for is for some of the preparation or the provisioning of at least the Chromebooks. So we can pay for a blood service to have some of that done, but deployment, which we are obliged under the terms to do within 60 days of receipt, that's all going on our shoulders.
Great. Thank you for your hard work.
Member Wilson?
No questions. Mark, Andrew, just thank you for your service and your hard work.
Member Brooks?
Yeah, I just want to thank the whole group for all the work that they do. Coming from the same kind of job, I know how it is, kind of being understaffed, so it's, we need the people to help out because, yeah, a lot more devices out there, so thanks for your work.
Member Chesley? No questions, I just wanted to say that the work that you are doing is so critical, just like transportation is so critical to our district and to the success of our students. As a parent with children in the district, being able to be supported fully and being able to take advantage of the technology and the resources that we have is definitely a benefit and a blessing to our district, so thank you so much. And then as relates to our hiring, we recognize that every organization, every school district, every industry is experiencing tremendous staff shortages. So not only, I think, is it expedient for us to get out there and post it, but to cast a wide net, and I would ask us to be very intentional about casting a wide net when we recruit for positions, and not keep going to the same sources, but to be as creative and thoughtful and cast a wide net and think about alternative ways to fill these positions with skilled employees. So thank you so much for your commitment and hard work.
I don't have any questions, thank you so much. This has been a lot of work for the Technology Department, and will continue to be, I think, more as we rely more and more on technology. Thank you so much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
So we do have this as a first read this evening, so if you have more questions, we'll be asked for consideration, then it's...
be asked for consideration then at the next meeting. So if anything comes up that you didn't think about this evening, just let us know and we'll make sure to provide those answers to you.
All right, next up, we have citizens come-ups. I do not have any cards. Was there anybody who wanted to speak and did not turn to the card? Okay. Moving on, we are at F, which is Action Items and Discussion. First up, we have action item 22-10-19, Consider Approval of Resolution for Official Voting Delegate to Represent the Board of Education at MASB's 2021 Delegate Assembly, first and final reading. The delegate assembly is coming up in November, and member Cidoo has graciously offered to be our voting delegate. And so the resolution tonight would officially give our approval for her to be our voting delegate. So I am looking for a motion for action item 22-10-19.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for official voting delegate to represent the Board of Education at MASB's 2021 Delegate Assembly, first and final reading, action item 22-10-19.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. It was moved by member Kehoe and seconded by member Wilson, that we consider approval of a resolution for official voting delegate to represent the Board of Education at the MASB's 2021 Delegate Assembly, first and final reading, action item 22-10-19. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right. Yes, thank you so much for doing this for us. All right. And then are there any future redundant topics?
Yes, Madam President, I want to bring up the board goal discussion again, and will you hear the date?
Yes.
Just to...
Did we, did we...
Or did we finalize the date? When did it set?
Um, did you speak to Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Okay.
So the facilitator is set, and the facilitator will be working with superintendent Mearns or president, vice president, and setting the agenda. So, but I want to get the date out there before we lose our calendar.
November 4th, it's at 7:00 PM, will be here. I know there is an FNO meeting, it'll be after that. And if anybody remembers, maybe not, several years ago, Ms. Cross was in the district working with the board. She was very good.
She also worked for MASB...
Seven.
She also worked for MASB for, I want to say, eight-plus years, something about the program.
I was in the audience when she presented, it was a very good presentation. She was efficient and kept everybody on track, which is fantastic. Also, we need to come up with, and I don't know what I've done with my papers, but I had all my notes on, but they got to be here somewhere, for mandatory expulsion training. That is really for new members who have never taken it. However, if it's a convenient night, anybody, of course, is welcome to show up for it. Member Christiansen sent me her availability, I will send that out to people and let me know what your availability is for those nights, and we will get it set up with our attorney who will provide us with that training. Because we actually haven't had it here since 2017? I believe it was 2017 we did it the last time, because we didn't have enough turnover to have warrant sets. And then we also need to come up with a date to do superintendent goals. So I will be calling people as to the dates for superintendent goals because with Thanksgiving, we are burrowing through November at this point. So I will send that email out tomorrow. If you can get back to me with your availability, that would be fantastic.
And I have one more thing to our calendars as they fill up. Yeah, we continue to talk about four discussions with the community, and it's blah, blah, blah. We were kind of hit and miss in terms of how we do it and how often we do it. And I want to bring it back to the table with, again, the intentionality, this could be embedded in our board goals, but setting a date for the next board community panel, just setting whatever you want to call it, and thinking about partnerships. Who else can we partner with to do this work?
And ideally, once we get this started, we would do, like, say, have like some kind of a topic and do more than one, like at different times to get different people be able to participate. Not a one-and-done, but, you know, there's numerous topics that the community is in, like we've had more interest, but yet we've never really discussed what the board actually does. What is our function? And then what is the function of some of the people in the district? You know, or even the finances, like how are schools funded in Michigan? Many people don't know that because they were not homeowners in 1994 and watched the property taxes go up, 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 and then attempt to, you know, pay for villages. So that is something that we need to start. So we had talked about starting that in January, so we can get some dates for that.
Yeah, we could send some dates for January, or we start...
It could also be worthwhile for us to go through the dynamic plan and our board goal process, because I think those will help identify some of the topics that we're going to be working on, that we want to share and get community feedback and input on in that, in that month. I think there'll be topics that will be unrelated, you know, school finance, for example, that is a creeping to sort of like an education session or at least a discussion or board governance and what we do. There's some other things I think that will likely come up in our discussion on our goals as well as on the dynamic plan that we can hold for us to share.
So just keep that in mind, that we'll start that. And then also, I'm pretty sure after member Chesta starts her committee, she will also have activities and tasks for us to participate in.
Yeah. I think that's going to be really important, just for the sake of not just building relationships, but transparency. I think it's really important for us as a board to be out front and to be as transparent as possible, so I'm looking forward to it.
Does anybody have anything else? All right. And of course, if you have any additional agenda topics, you can send them in. The next thing is follow-up board questions, we did not have any from last time. Tonight, member Wilson would like to know how much of Bond 2020 has been spent in total. And does anybody have anything else they'd like to add to this list? All right.
You know, superintendent Mearns is going to send out the communication to parents around transportation, right? That will be tomorrow, okay. Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, if nobody has anything else, our regular meeting will be adjourned, it is 8:15. We are going to have a dynamic plan workshop, while this will not be taped. It is a public meeting, so people are welcome to stay. And do we need about five minutes? So we will adjourn for about five minutes, and then we'll be back. Thank you so much.